Good morning.
Hey there, good morning.
Morning Tom.
Good morning.
Still messing around here for a second.
Wonderful Friday morning, well guys.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Ladies and all my friends, love you all.
See, who else are we missing?
You and you, Randy.
Maggie.
Thanks, Tom. Do you need to re-forward the invite to the rest of the group? Or? I figured more of them would be on by now.
You do.
I think we. I'm going to text Maggie real quick. I don't have mics, the new guy.
I got your phone number. I do. Hold on, I'll be back.
Yeah, I'll re-forward the link as well.
Thank you, Anna.
Hey, Tom, do you remember if Ms. Wright, Maisha was able to join? No, she had that teacher, the parent teachers conference, so she may not be.
She did. She said she might, but it'll be a little later.
I sent off to Maggie.
Hey buddy, you know, we have online, we're waiting for you. Well, you have to go to the.
Tom, do you want to mute yourself?
I'm sorry. Yeah, hold on, my big mouth going.
Randy, the reason he has my name, he couldn't find the Zoom link, so that's why it says Mark in the screen name for Tom.
And he can usually go in and edit that still on his end.
Sure.
Hey, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Michael is in the wrong, he's in the waiting room. We get on, so he needs to go direct.
Anna should be able to promote him.
Hey, Anna.
The only people in the attendee list is the court reporter and one of our applicants.
There's no Mike? Michael Minor? Go into, you should have gotten an email.
I'm going to see if I can find his name and forward it on to him.
You're on? He should be on any second. There he is, isn't he? Connect your sound. Nope, that's not.
Good morning.
There he is.
Hey, good morning, sir.
Good morning.
There you are.
Randy, did you ever get a car or need help yet?
We're good on that front, thank you.
Okay, let me know if you aren't, if you need some help.
Two, three, four, Maggie. Maggie Moran says she's not able to attend. So who else do we need? Who else was out there? Remember Tom?
Um.
Jazz.
Jazz, yeah.
Who was it? Oh, yeah, Jazz.
And Jazz said he was going to be a little late, that he wouldn't be able to join till nine thirty or nine forty-five, so we knew that. Uh, and remind me about what Wright said.
I I thought she had a parent teacher conference, but she was going to try to pop off early.
Jazz just said the same thing that I did, so for whatever reason, I think we got the wrong link. We got a Microsoft Teams link. Anna, if you could send Jazz the same link you did me, I think he can get on now.
Yeah, I think he was on that email. So hopefully he received it.
And the Microsoft Teams is usually when you do a closed session, so that might be what that link is for.
Right.
Looks like he's on now.
Oh, hey Jazz. I turned on your microphone just to be sure we can hear you. Oh, I can't hear me, sorry.
Hello. Sorry about that, I couldn't find the link.
No worries, you weren't the only one.
Yeah, where did I go? Okay. I keep looking at my name for Tom and trying to unmute myself, but in fact, I'm going to mute it already, so. All right, I think. Anna, we've got our five.
We do, and we do have one applicant in the, oh. I just accidentally, I was trying to rename Tom, and I accidentally moved him to a panelist. Let me get him back in.
Okay.
But yes, we can get started as soon as.
Soon as I see Tom, I think.
And he declined the promotion.
Background looks okay.
That is my fault, I do apologize.
I'm a panelist, though.
Yeah, I see you down there. You're going to light up here under me in just a second.
Morning, Anna.
Hello, just changing your name on Zoom.
Did I get my IRS paperwork out too and change my name there?
Okay, so yeah, we'll just take things out of order, I guess, since we have one applicant and only one applicant in the lobby right now. We'll just start with their case and go from there.
Which one are we going to start with, Anna?
We'll start with docket item fourteen.
Okay. All right, good morning. Board of zoning adjustments, staff and panelists and board members, thank you for coming out this Friday to hear these three cases. Anna, let's go ahead and swear people in and tell us about the cases.
Yep, so we'll have staff be sworn in, waiting for Larissa to.
Good, ready?
I am.
There, thank you. Please raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in this hearing today?
On an annus key, I do. Connor?
Connor Tomlin, I do.
Larissa?
Larissa Chambi, I do.
Those are the three staff with cases today.
That sounds great. All right, Anna.
Okay, so I'm going to briefly describe the procedure for just this online meeting today. As everyone is well aware, we have two categories of participants. We have attendees and panelists, so right now, the only people who are panelists are the board members and city staff. If you are an applicant or a citizen who wishes to participate in a case, you're going to use the raise hand function in Zoom when the chair calls your case, and that's going to let city staff know that you wish to be promoted to a panelist. You're using the Zoom app on your phone or on a browser or on your computer. You're going to see that hand icon at the bottom of the screen. Click this to raise your hand. When the promotion happens, you will need to accept promotion, and it will also appear very temporarily that you've been disconnected, but please don't panic. This is just Zoom reconnecting you from an attendee to a panelist. If you are using the app on your phone or computer or a browser, like I said, please change your screen name to reflect your legal name, because this does help with the promotion process. And if you are on the phone, we know that you can adjust your screen name, but you still can provide public testimony by raising your hand by pressing the star and the number nine key. At the time of promotion, please turn on your camera and microphone so the board can see and hear you, and also so we can administer the oath to you as well. When you are not actively giving testimony, please keep your microphone muted. For all testimony, the VZ secretary or their designated representative is going to identify you when it's time for you to speak. You're going to be sworn in, and then applicants are going to receive five minutes for their fifteen, excuse me, fifteen minutes for their presentation. And if you are just a general member of the public, you're going to be given two minutes if you represent a single interest like yourself, or five minutes if you represent neighborhood association, HOA, nonprofit, etc. You will be hearing an alarm when your allotted time is over, so please be respectful and wrap up your statement once you hear that alarm. We ask for no repetitive or irrelevant testimony. And if you're going to admit any exhibits, please have that on the ready on your computer, so you can share your screen. This is going to include a presentation, like a PowerPoint presentation, photos, maps, etc. And then if admitted, you're going to email them to the assigned planner on the case, so we can have those for record-keeping purposes. And this is a reminder that the chat box online is just for questions about the agenda, questions about Zoom, that merits of each case cannot be discussed in the chat box. And that concludes the overview of the online meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, thank you very much. Hey, Tom G, can you turn on your camera? Tom Gorance. Oh, there you are. Thank you, Tom. Okay, Anna, let's call the cases as you see, the three, one of the three.
So we're going to start with docket item fourteen. This is case CD BZA twenty twenty-four twelve. Property in question is seventy-eight fifteen East US forty Highway. This is a request to appeal zoning violations related to a non-conforming sign on about four acres generally located at seventy-eight East US forty Highway. The applicant is connected with us online today. Their name is Eric. And this is a late file appeal. So today, we are just discussing about whether or not they should receive the full public hearing despite the filing deadline requirements set out in eighty-eight five seventy-five oh three B.
All right. Eric, please turn on your microphone, please, to be sworn in. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in this hearing today?
I do.
And please state your name for the court reporter.
Eric Kricki.
Thank you. Anna, do we have anyone else who's on this case that you see in the audience?
Nope, there is no one else online.
Okay, great. Eric, for us to hear your items today, we need to admit a list of administrative exhibits labeled one to eight. They're part of the staff report. You would have seen them before. Do you have any problem with us admitting those for your case?
I do not.
Great, and those are admitted, and one of those is a presentation by, Anna, you leading this one, sorry?
Yep, yep. So just a brief overview of the timeline to add to the discussion about the filing situation. There were three separate notices sent out to the property owner and their representative. And the case was filed forty days late, the appeal case. That's where we're at.
Okay. Eric, you had lots of time to file a notice, yet you didn't do it for forty days. Tell us why you think you are in the right.
Well, yeah, the forty days, I guess the reason for the delay was by the time I got the notice and I went to work on doing my due diligence on cost analysis of what was asked of me to abate it. I went to talk to the sign companies to see what it would cost to remove it, to add it back or to repair it, which was my ultimate what I wanted to do. And by the time I got all my options together, once I got through the holidays and some of those delays and realized where I was at, I've been talking with at the, I think she was the one who had sent me the abatement notice. Yeah, the time had just passed and I was late in filing the appeal, but in retrospect, I should have filed the appeal immediately while doing my due diligence on to move forward, but it's just the way the holidays fell and my schedule fell. I didn't get it done in time, so. I realize I'm forty days in and your rules are fifteen days, so I'm really just asking for your grace and you in hearing my case.
Right. We've seen, you know, three and four days will kind of kind of be more lenient to that. A month and a week, I really can't recall when we've done that before, where we've gone out that far, but I'm so I'm a little bit reluctant, but board members, do you have any other questions of Mr. Eric? None? Or comments on the case?
I agree with you, sir.
Yeah. So all right, well, I appreciate, again, I'm just one member of the board, but I'm in sympathy for what happened, but you know, five or ten, you know, five or six days maybe, we'd be more learning, but it's just been too long, at least for me, sir, so. No one else has any comments, or Mr. Eric doesn't have any other comments, or?
I think the only other comment I add related to that is I just get concerned about setting the precedent, so for future cases, I understand you kind of have a unique scenario over the holidays as well, but as soon as we start allowing one person to have these kind of filings after that timeframe, I'm worried about the slippery slope we might get from other applicants, so it's not saying you didn't have maybe valid reasons here, but I'm kind of worried about the precedent we'll set, and I'm also a little hesitant about this amount of delay after the appeal timeframe.
All right, so board members, do you have any other comments and/or motion on this case?
I'd offer a motion.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Mixdorf?
In case number twelve, I move that we deny the applicant's request.
Second.
Who's seconded? I'm sorry.
Michael.
Michael, thank you, Michael, for that second. Anna, please call the roll.
Gorance.
I am.
Mixdorf?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
And Ebbets.
Aye. I'm sorry, sir, your appeal has been denied. All right, Anna, let's continue on. You got anybody else out there?
Yep, now we're going to go to docket item five. And let me just scroll to my correct sheet. This is docket item number five, case CD BZA twenty twenty-four eleven for one four three Lawn Avenue. This is a request to approve a variance to setbacks of an accessory structure plus any additional variances and about point one acres generally located at one four three Lawn Avenue. The applicant is with us. I'm going to promote them. Joseph?
I've got it. I'm not quite ready for him yet.
Connor Tomlin is the staff planner associated with this case. There's nine exhibits, and Joseph has been connected with us.
All right. I'm not quite ready, I apologize, I'm just trying to get at this docket item.
There you are, yes.
Good.
All right. Anna, do we have anyone else interested in this case?
No, there's no one else online.
All right, thank you. Joseph, please raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in this hearing today?
I do.
Thank you, and please state your name for the court reporter.
It's Joseph A. Dreier.
Thank you. Sir, we have a list of administrative exhibits labeled one to nine to hear your case today. Do you allow us to admit those?
Yes.
Thank you. One of those is a presentation by, sorry, Connor Tomlin, Mr. Tomlin, please tell us about this case.
Sure thing. Are you able to see my screen?
We sure can.
Okay, awesome. So today we have CD BZA twenty twenty-four eleven located at one four three Lawn Avenue in an R two five district. The applicant is seeking approval of a variance to the minimum setback of an accessory structure in relation to its distance to the primary structure. This is a rough location of the site. This is a closer look at the site itself. Lot highlighted in yellow, as well as that corner lot on the south are both common ownership.
Hey Connor, or maybe just my computer, I'm just seeing the green still.
Yeah, I don't see it either, Connor.
Oh, is it not, is it not changing? Okay, gotcha. Can you see me switching it around now?
Yes.
Yes, now, that's good. So tell us about where the site's located, sir.
All right. Gotcha, guess I'll do it this way. So this is the rough location of the site. This is the closer look to the property, outlined in yellow, as well as that property on the corner to the south is common ownership. This is the site plan provided. The proposed detached garage in the rear yard there, I have been working with the applicant. They are in the process of combining these lots together. So I've been helping the applicant through that. And the variance request is a variance of nine inches to the setback of an accessory structure in relation to the primary structure to permit a setback of nine feet, three inches on the subject site. That's the distance between the primary structure, the home, and this proposed garage. A substantial change of the character of the neighborhood is anticipated. The difficulty can be obviated through a change of design, and that concludes my presentation.
All right. All right, Mr. Dreier, go ahead. Is it Dreier or Dreier, sir? And your microphone's muted. I'm mute.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's Dreier.
Oh, Dreier, thank you, sir. And does anyone have any comments of city staff, of the board members, that is, of city staff on this issue? All right, seeing none. Mr. Dreier, why should we grant your request today, sir?
Well, I'm hoping you will grant it. What happened was basically the whole design procedure went through, we paid for all of that, and then that's when we discovered that we was nine inches too close. And there's really difficult to move it because we have an easement on the rear of the property, and we're as close as we can get to that right now. So if you don't approve it, we have to go back and redesign the plans and pay for that.
What do your neighbors say about this? Have you got any comment from them, sir?
As far as I know, there was no comments from the neighbors. We posted the signs and there's been no comments. The comment that I've heard is that they were just happy something was being developed and that he cleaned up the lots.
All right. I'm just trying to scan through here, so you're doing a lot combination on your lot fourteen where the house is and lot fifteen, which is the corner lot, yes?
Yes, that's already been filed with the register of deeds, and it's they're combined. They've had joint ownership for some time.
Right.
Or they've owned both properties for some time now.
And the nine inches is just on the garage side, sir, is that?
It's between the deck and the house.
Well, that's where you need the variances, right?
Yeah, it's between the deck and the house, or not, I mean, between the deck and the garage.
Yes.
What at one point, I understood that he was just going to be redoing the deck, the homeowner, and then he said, finally told me, he said, no, I just built it, so. That's what, that's as we discovered that we were nine inches too close.
Right.
And so just to clarify, the intent is to access the garage from the south on Anderson Avenue?
That is correct.
Okay.
Is that grudge already started?
Pardon?
Is the grudge already started?
They've they've gotten started on some of it. They was trying to get started.
Is it going to be too close to the house behind it, the properties on the front side?
No. No, actually, it's not too close to that. We're within, that's been approved already.
We'll just look at that, so.
And sir, is there an? And sir, is there an, is there a utility easement on the back by the garage area? Do you have a utility?
On the rear property, there is a, uh, an easement there.
That's what I thought, okay. All right. Board members, any other comments or questions on this?
And he's already got your permits for this?
Permit.
Have you already received your permits for this?
Well, we haven't received it because it's held up until the zoning is approved. The, the permits itself have been approved.
Okay, but he started building before the permits, so.
They had, uh, he started a little bit, but it's, that's what we stopped for permits, yes.
Okay, thank you. I mean, it's, any beautification you can do is great.
Pardon?
I said, any beautification you can do. I'm sorry, my, I'm, I'm gonna turn this up here, but any beautification you can do is great, obviously.
Uh, well, if you look over the past years, yeah, he's improved those properties tremendously.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Members, any other questions or comments? Motion, anybody?
I guess I would just note, since these lots are being combined, I feel like there is that extra space in this whole lot. We're not cramming kind of the garage super close to the house and then potentially having another close property in the um, lot just to the south of it, so I would offer a motion.
All right.
Uh, in case number eleven, I move the applicant's request be granted in accordance with site plan and staff report.
I have a motion. Do I have a second from someone?
Second.
Uh, is that Michael again? I couldn't see.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Uh, a motion and a second. Um, Anna, please call the roll.
Big store?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Ebbets.
Aye. Good luck with your project, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
All right. All right. You're going to number fifteen, Anna?
Yep, and the applicant has been trying to log on, uh, to Zoom for the past fifteen minutes, uh, and has been unsuccessful. We've tried to, you know, resend them two different links, yep.
Anna, I think he was able to join now.
I don't see him in the attendees list.
One second. Okay, I thought I saw an email that said he was on now. I'm sorry for the confusion.
But I don't know if you want to give, uh, city staff five more minutes to to resent him the link. Or if you want to make the decision about continuance now, that's up to.
Together, maybe give him a minute or two to try to figure it out.
Sounds great. Bear with us.
Um, it looks like there's two Anas, and I believe one of them might be the applicant. I think they sent a message in the chat.
It does look like he is logged in as Anna. Um, I will change his name just for clarity. All right. And Steve, can you hear us or confirm that you are online?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Steve.
Technical difficulty.
That's okay. Do you have a camera, perhaps?
I'm trying to turn the video on, uh.
There's a button in the lower left of the zoom screen usually.
It won't, uh. Yeah, I'm familiar with it, but I keep clicking it and it won't let me go to a video. Here, hold on. I'm trying. Let me start video, please. It's not letting me do it.
Okay, that's fine. We'll take your word for it. So, uh, sir, please raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in this meeting today?
Yes, sir.
And please state your name for the court reporter.
Stephen M. Wurger.
Thank you. And Stephen, as part of your, um, uh, docket today, there's a list of administrative exhibits actually labeled one to three. I feel like I'm missing something. Usually it's a lot longer. Okay, I don't see.
So there, there are nine.
Okay, there are nine. Thank you.
Nine, number nine.
Number nine. Oh, uh, so the normal nine exhibits, Anna?
Correct.
Okay, uh, so do you have, do we have your permission, uh, sir, to admit those for your case today?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. One of those is a presentation, um, by Larissa.
Sorry, Larissa, before you start, I'm just gonna officially call this case into the record.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we all got it mixed up from the, from the technology issues, but here we go. Docket item fifteen, this is case CD SUP twenty twenty three fifty-three, four, one, four, zero, zero, one, northeast two, ten highway. This is a request to approve a special use permit for a five thousand five hundred and sixty-three space parking lot for warehousing, wholesaling and freight movement use on about twenty-six point nine acres generally located south of USM two, ten highway and east of Birmingham Levy District Road. And as we've stated, Larissa Chomby is the staff planner associated with this case.
All right, and, uh, sir, you're reminded, even though that we swore you in a few moments ago, we're calling your case and you agreed to tell the truth at this point. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
I thank you. And again, uh, we're admitting those nine exhibits with your approval. One of those is a presentation by Ms. Larissa. Larissa, please tell us about the case.
All right, good morning. Give me one second to share my screen. All right, can you see that all right?
We sure can.
Okay, so this is SUP twenty twenty three, zero, 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 five, three at fourteen, zero, zero, one, northeast Missouri two, ten highway. Uh, this is, uh, the location of the subject property. It's located in the riverfront industrial area south of Missouri Highway two, ten. Here's just a zoomed in look at the zoning surrounding the property. As you can see, it's zoned M one dash five and it's surrounded on the north, east and south with R eighty, and there's a sliver of M one dash five to the northwest. Here's a look at the, uh, map, um, showing the agricultural uses and then those, um, manufacturing uses, industrial uses just, um, across the highway. And this property is located, um, almost completely within the floodplain. I do have another slide showing the one hundred and five hundred year floodplain lines. So this is the proposed site plan. The applicant is proposing a five thousand five hundred and thirty-six uh, parking space lot. That red line that you see is a one hundred year floodplain and the yellow line you see is the five hundred. Um, this use will be, um, to store new and ready to ship cars, trucks, uh, tractor trailers, construction equipment and just some additional storage. Uh, the applicant, if you can see my mouse right here, is proposing a gate for added security to the property. There are two parking spaces for the security personnel. Um, the renters will provide their own security personnel with inspections of the perimeter site of the property every thirty minutes. And there's about two to three security per, personnel, um. There are no structures on this property and the, um, applicant has stated that the stored vehicles and trailers will be stored there from several days to over a year. Here is the proposed landscaping plan. The landscaping plan is compliant with the zoning and development code and with the specific warehousing, wholesaling and freight movement requirements. Here's a look at, uh, from the property. The trees you see are the trees we see, and I'll go back, um, just along this, uh, green buffer line here. Those are to be retained um, for the duration of the use. And as you know, special use permits need to comply with these criteria. I want to emphasize that the applicant has stated that they will comply with all of the zoning and development code, in particular with the, uh, landscaping requirements, um, for this use. Um, it is adjacent to an R eighty zone, and so the use is required to provide full screening, um, from those districts. Here's a view from highway two, ten. And then this is just a direct view to the site, um, showing the trees that will remain, um, just to the right of the property right there. And with that, uh, city plan commission recommended approval with conditions, and I can take any questions if you have one.
All right, thank you.
I do have a question for Larissa. How often do we see these projects being built in a floodplain? Is, is that pretty frequent? I guess in parts of the city, or how have we gone about that in the past for other projects?
I don't, this is the first project I've seen, um, built in the floodplain, um, but I'm not sure. I think the applicant might have some more information on how they do that.
All right, any other questions of, uh, Larissa? All right, sir, um, we can't see you, but I know you're there. Uh, why should we approve your request today, sir? Steve?
Uh, uh, we're in agreement with the, uh, comments and conditions as far as the planning commission, I mean, the planning commission and the staff that has come through there, uh, to explain the floodplain. One of the conditions, if you look at the conditions, was that we get what they call a ClomRF and a LomRF, which is conditional letter of map provision for fill. And we have successfully achieved that or gotten that already, so all of the area that we use for parking will be above the floodplain elevation, so we're not actually storing any vehicles in the floodplain. Uh, what we were doing, waiting on that approval was going ahead in a phase where we would have done everything that was above the hundred year floodplain until we got permission to fill the floodplain, and it will take a little bit to get that, some of that area filled. Um, other than that, we've got, it's basically storage for like you see now with the Ford vehicles, uh, contain, trailers, truck trailer, you know, the trailer part of the trucks when they're on the road. There's plenty of that out there that they need to storage, and that's what we're using this for. Uh, it's on the riverside of the levee, so there is no building necessarily uh, considered or that type of thing, since we are on that side. It's just gonna be, uh, agricultural around us for quite some time, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Larissa, I've got another question for you. I, I see that city staff recommends denial of this permit. What, why is that? Why do you say that?
Um, that was the original recommendation, um, for, I believe it was the February, uh, city plan commission. Um, at that time, there was no proposed landscaping, um, towards some of the residential zoning districts. Uh, it got continued off of that city plan commission docket and in between the original date and then this, the, when it was heard, uh, the applicant provided, uh, the required screening and um, so staff changed the recommendation to approval with conditions.
And Larissa, another question for you. So, uh, these tractor trailers hold maybe, you know, fourteen cars per, per load. Any residential impact?
Not, yeah, staff is not concerned with that. Um, there are a lot of, um, industrial uses in the vicinity and, um, any uses uh, to the south and potentially to the north, those are all, um, also within the floodplain, so it would be pretty difficult to develop, uh, residential uses there.
Right, okay, thank you for that. Mr. Steve, I know Ford's pumping out those trucks, so I'm guessing that's one of your major tenants?
At this point, yes. And just so you know, typically, the car carriers are not there. They take them there, they take them off those car carriers, and then they, then they, uh, store them there on the site. And that's normally for the F one fifties or smaller cars. If there are any of the transits, they are driven there because those car carriers are inefficient, because you can't put one on top, because you'd be knocking them off going underneath bridges all the time.
I see. All right, uh, board members, any other questions of staff or the applicant?
Sir, I have a question. I have a remark. As one board member, I think this is a great location for what he wants us to do. It's, it's not visible to the public and out of the way.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Gorance.
I don't have any other questions, but I would offer a motion if there are no other questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mixdorf, go ahead.
In case number fifty-three, I move to grant the applicant's in accordance with site plan, staff report and the conditions therein.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Yes, sir, second.
Uh, Gorance, okay, thank you, Mr. Gorance. Anna, please call the roll.
Gorance?
Hi.
Big store?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Ebbets.
Aye. Sir, your project is approved. Good luck with it, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And before we go offline here, just want to thank all board members who gave out their Friday morning to finish up the cases from Tuesday. Thank you so much for coming out today. Thank you, guys.
Have a good weekend.
Everybody have a good weekend.
See you next month.
Thanks, Anna. See you.
Thank you, guys. See you next month.
Yep.